Okay, so the order that I'm gonna interview attorneys is gonna be the local government, Louvast Cobb, Lee Cox, then Thorpe Purdy. So can I have local government stand first?
Thank you.
Do you want us in that same...
Yeah, you can come up here and address the counsel.
Sure. Thank you. Try to sit behind here.
You can move it out if you'd like. I can't move this.
Yeah, yes. I'm willing. I did have a summary handout of material that echoed our proposal. I believe it's been handed out, but please let me know if nobody has it. And we did bring some extras, at least for staff, and not enough for this crowd unfortunately, but I know staff can make copies in the event that anybody would like a copy after the meeting. So I'm Carrie Connolly. This is Mark Wolf. We are part of Local Government Law Group. Our name sort of says it all. We specialize in local governments. That is the work that we do. Those are the entities we advise. We understand the council has some questions about who we are and how we serve our clients, one of which is the city of Oak Ridge. We appreciate the opportunity to allow you, for you to allow us to provide an initial overview of the work that we do, who we are, how we serve. So who we are, like I said, the name says it all. We're otherwise known as LGLG, which isn't necessarily obvious what it stands for, but that's Local Government Law Group. We are eight experienced attorneys who specialize only in providing local government law advice, solely to Oregon's local governments. We proudly uphold the highest professional and ethical standards in our representation of your city as well as the rest of our clients. All of our attorneys are well-versed in local government law. We can all answer questions with regard to public meetings, public records, code drafting, code enforcement, ethics, and we provide counsel trainings. I'm Carrie. It's Carolyn on the letterhead, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows I'm me. I happen to be the senior member of LGLG. In addition to local government advice, I specialize in public contracting, land use and development, government mergers and acquisitions, and public private infrastructure financing, which is becoming more and more common and prevalent these days in Oregon. Ross Williamson, who you're familiar with, overlaps in many of my areas of practice and also specializes in risk analysis.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Mark Wolf, and as Carrie was talking about herself and Ross Williamson, another attorney is Kristi Munson with 18 years of municipal law experience. Her focus is more on the employment and labor law side of things, as well as government ethics, trainings, again legislative advocacy, and lobbying. Next on our list is Diana Moffett with 19 years of municipal law experience. Her focus is more on labor law, which includes union contract negotiations. That includes the police unions, fire unions, public work unions, general unit unions. That involves mediation and arbitrations, interest arbitrations, as well as termination and other disciplinary arbitrations, as well as employment relations boards hearings. Next on our list is myself, Mark Wolf. I do a lot of labor law as well, which again includes union contract negotiations, mediations, arbitrations. I also have some experience in the telecommunications and cable franchise negotiations. So that's one thing that's a little bit unique to myself and Kristi Munson.
We're doing the little tag team here, so just to try to keep it interesting. We have a couple new additions to our firm who you haven't been familiar with. We're proud to announce that Yin Schmidt, previously with Harang Long, has joined our firm as of the beginning of this month. He is preeminent, renowned statewide for municipal defense litigation. He specializes in civil rights law, employment law, eminent domain and inverse condemnation. So that is just a huge boon for us that he was willing to come and join us, right when Mark's dad retired. It was basically a, they did kind of one went out one door and one came in the other door. Dan Lawler is our new associate. We just hired him. He comes to us from Eugene Planning. He specializes in land use, obviously, law, but also is working with all of us on intergovernmental agreements, public contracting, employment and labor law. And then we have Rebecca Dorman. She was a staff attorney with the League of Oregon Cities. She is a contract attorney now. She has been in-house with us. She solely works with LGLG, but she is on contract right now. She also specializes in community development and urban renewal.
So that's who we are, and then next on our presentation is who we serve. So I guess first off, we have over 100 years of combined experience in municipal law, which is pretty unique. And so who we serve. We serve over 100 fire and other special districts, as well as other government-related entities throughout the state, 25 of which of those are cities. So we are the city attorney for 25 cities throughout the state. We also counsel on special projects for other numerous cities throughout the state and other districts. Some of these are, at least from my experience, from what I do is, again, we might not be the city attorney, but I will help with mediations and arbitrations and things like that. So how we serve, our law firm only serves governments. With that and with our experience, we're able to answer questions and complete projects quickly and efficiently, as we've seen, or somebody in our firm has seen and done most everything. Internally, we try to route whatever the problem or the project is to the proper attorney with the proper experience. We mostly communicate with our clients through phone and email, but oftentimes there's a need arises where a face-to-face meeting is warranted. Oftentimes, we'll travel to the city, or sometimes, you know, our clients will visit us in our office. The city can choose a point person in our law firm, and some cities choose to do that. Other cities with familiarity with us don't necessarily have a point person as staff is familiar with, oh, I've got an employment problem, I need to call this attorney, or I have a land use problem, I need to call that attorney. So we can have a point person. Oftentimes, we don't have a point person.
And our experience is just that as familiarity grows, people, staff, and any authorized counselor or mayor just knows who to call in our firm, and that saves you time and money. So in addition to being able to be quickly and quick and efficient on responding to city questions, because we have our standard forms, we have answered nearly every question, our municipal focus also allows us to provide for free updates on case law and legislation that affects your city, and also to provide at a flat fee various packets that prove really helpful to our entities, such as public contracting packets that include public contracting rules, resolutions that you can adopt. We don't have to do anything to them. We tailor them to your city, but it's far less expensive for you than having it uniquely initially generated for your entity. Ours is an open-door policy. If there are problems, we encourage you to call us. If there's service problems, if there are billing problems, we want to hear about it directly. And our experience is that problems can be resolved really expediently, as long as there's that direct communication. We stay out of local politics. We respond only to the questions that are provided to us. We don't interject ourselves into city business. And when we're provided a project by an authorized staff member, or counselor, or mayor, that is the only time that you actually start incurring legal fees.
Yeah, two minutes left.
Oh, thanks. I didn't know we had a timeline.
Yeah.
Okay. So in this manner, we've served Oak Ridge for over 20 years. I was a much younger attorney when I was here for the initial interview in 1998. It has been a pleasure to serve for over 20 years since that date. We've seen many city administrators come and go, eight to be exact, including two interim's. We're happy to answer any questions you have. I apologize. I did not realize that there was a time limit, and I would like to, I would have reserved time for questions if you have any.
Reserve time for questions.
Perfect.
So we are doing great.
Okay, wonderful. We do know you have a number of fine attorneys to hear from. We appreciate their firms. We refer conflicts to them, and hopefully, none of them will do yo-yo tricks and upstage us even further.
And upstages.
Thanks, boy.
Okay. So counselors, having heard this presentation, I'll leave it to you to direct any questions that you would like to ask. We'd like to keep it like a five minutes or so, but please continue. Get your hands, and we'll do that with Bobby.
So as you respond to inquiries, how do you track that, so you're not having duplicate responses to, maybe you're getting multiple inquiries from the city, but so how do you track duplicates and making sure that people aren't window shopping also?
Right. Well, that's a good question, and it does come up in various cities. So what we tend to do is, we have monthly check-ins where we talk about what are the outstanding issues that each of us are working on, what are the kind of overlapping issues that more than one of us may be advising on. But the second that we get a call, and it isn't a client that I'm usually working with, I say, have you been working with somebody else in our firm? Okay, well, you're gonna be best served by continuing to work with that individual, because you don't want to get me up to speed on the facts and the background. That's gonna cost you money. But if ultimately, you know, somebody wants to work with two members of our firm, that's fine. We will regularly confer between attorneys, though, to make sure that everybody has all of the same facts.
Thank you. You have another question, Bobby?
I do. Sorry. So when you provide responses to questions, do you provide any supporting documents to support that response, like reference laws or anything in your response that can show us where your opinion came from?
That is always the goal. We want you to understand the advice we're giving. What we want to do is provide you plain language advice and cite to the sources of the basis for our opinions. We range, of course, sometimes responses are more informal emails up through more formal letters, and anything that we're doing can be tailored to suit whatever the requestor's need is. There was another point I was gonna make on that. Mark, did you have any?
No, I think you covered it, yeah.
Okay. Sorry. So if I could ask questions?
You absolutely can, Bobby.
So I'm assuming you guys have law clerks in your office?
It varies, actually. Mark was a law clerk long ago. Currently, we don't need, we don't have a need for a law clerk. Oh, I'm sorry, his dad is now our law clerk. So he's available to us. So currently, we don't, and let me finish your question.
So really, what I'm looking for in it is, I know a lot of law clerks will work for different judges, and who those judges were, and kind of what experience any law clerk you have bring to your firm.
Mark?
So I happen to have been a law clerk for a judge at the Lane County Circuit Court. Oftentimes, at least at the Lane County Circuit Court, the job is a contract for one year after, typically right after law school. So I was a law clerk, and then after that, I got on with the local government law.
I have to say that his connections at the court still serve us.
Chris, go ahead.
As you tell, you are the firm that the council has already decided to terminate, so I am curious why you've decided to apply for the same job, and what would be different this time around from a couple weeks ago?
I have to say that that is not news that we were provided with. What we understood is that there was a request for proposals. Our clients regularly survey the market, and we encourage that, to go out, see who else provides similar services, compare costs, see who is best suited to serve your needs. Had I known that you were literally terminated, I would be, I'd question why we were invited here. But I think that regardless, our duty, we care deeply about cities. We care deeply about this city, and I believe that it is our duty to continue to at least try to provide those services to any entity, and to let you know what we offer, and then let it be your choice. And if, in fact, you do move on to another firm, and I've said, there are great firms here, we're going to continue providing these services, and we will be here.
I have one more question. So do you guys read over the minutes for the last few months? Because it's been a topic that's been brought up multiple times throughout the council.
Yeah, that is one of the, well, so different cities ask us to do different things. Regularly, from the cities that I've permanently served, I get the packet, I review the packet, I advise the day of the meeting on various things that I anticipate might come up during the meeting, or things that need to be changed, or the way that a resolution reads that needs to be changed. And in doing so, I read the minutes. So I did read the minutes for the last meeting this morning, and I did hear different counselors express different opinions. So since there hasn't been a majority of your quorum, terminate the contract. We consider that we're still your attorneys. So I think that that's a fair answer.
I'd just like to apologize. All these counselors up here are, most of them are new elected, and so the firm that was here, and we as counselors needed to see everybody, and that's why you're here. So I thank you for your time, and all of us will look at all the situation.
I have to tell you, it's a joy, and we appreciate the opportunity, particularly the yo-yo part.
Do you have any other questions from counsel at all? I have just a couple questions. So, and I'm back here. So can you explain to counsel who a city attorney actually represents?
Holy moly, how did I miss that? Thank you. Yes, of course, we represent the entity, and while there are individuals authorized to incur attorney-client fees, attorney, city attorney fees, and can pose questions to us, whenever we answer a question, it is with the entity's interests at heart. We regularly have to remind staff and individual officials who call us, I am not advising you. I don't have your interests at heart. You know, I don't have your individual special interests in my mind as I'm advising the entity. And we expect the entity to be informed of our legal advice. Anything to add to that, Mark?
No, I think that, yeah, I think that covers it. The city is the entity, it's not one.
It is something that we have to remind individuals, and we do tell our councils, because it can look, it can be uncomfortable. It can be misunderstood, since only certain individuals are authorized to incur attorney fees for the city. So I'm so pleased that you asked that question. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. So I have another one. So have you ever been wrong, and if you have, how do you, can you provide a frame of reference as to what you do if you determine that, oh, hey, that was wrong, and how do you make a mistake?
Apologize.
I like that.
Yeah, so the first thing I do is, the second I know I've made a mistake, I'm like, my mistake, I am so sorry. Here, I either, you know, here's the reason that this was wrong, you know, these are the facts I was basing it on, or I just wasn't aware of this portion of the law. And then, you know, obviously, I'm not gonna charge you for that piece, and how to remedy moving forward.
Okay. And how do you handle annual fee schedule increases? Do you do that on a rolling basis? How does that happen?
So we evaluate on an annual basis where our fees are, how long it's been since we raised our fees. We recently, I think last year was the first time we raised fees in four years?
I've only been here for three, so.
Okay. So he hasn't gone through that process before.
Yeah, he hasn't even had to have a gap.
And then if we do decide to raise fees, we try to inform you of that during budget season, so that then you can incorporate it into the next year's budget, and you'll have, you should be able to evaluate fairly.
Are there any other questions from counsel? Thank you so much for coming, and thank you for your presentation.
You're very welcome.
I really appreciate it. And of course, welcome to the...
Thank you.
Okay, so can we have Louvast Cobb please come up?
I don't know if I need, can everyone hear me without the microphone, or do you want the microphone?
Microphone.
Fair enough. So I'll use the microphone. Usually, I'm not accused of having a soft voice. My name's Eric DeFreeze. This is Erin Fennerty, my partner. We're from Louvast Cobb in Eugene. We thank the city council, mayor, and all y'all for inviting us here tonight to speak about the RFP for city attorney services. Both Erin and I are experienced in public body work, doing direct advice to governing bodies, to executive officials that are authorized, as well as the administrative staff that is involved in any given project. Again, as was brought up before, the city, and therefore the city council is the governing body, are who we answer to primarily, and then we work in accordance with your direction and delegation. Our experience is that of general counsel, and so as general counsel, we ensure compliance with all legal requirements as they come along. We advise on developing viable courses of action when directed. We represent the city in any hearings, litigation from trial court up through appellate courts in front of the administrative commissions or other state agencies. We're general practitioners from a public body standpoint. Both Erin and I keep apprised of our clients' needs. We're a tag team of sorts in that we have constant communication as to what our clients' needs are, what the projects are that are current, because at any given time, I may be in trial, she may be in trial, we may be in depositions, and we want to make sure that the city public body clients have access to one or the other of us at any given time. We have numerous partners that can step in and work on public issues that have experience in these public issues. However, Erin and I are the primary contacts, and we make it a point that we're both primary contacts, so that if the city has an issue, and low and behold, it may be an emergency or an urgent issue, we're going to be there for you. As set out in our response to the RFP, which I believe has been distributed to the council, we focus our practice on advising public bodies. We serve as a first responder for public body issues as they come along. If that's an issue where some citizen has contacted the city and has a complaint or an issue that they want addressed, they want to speak with legal counsel, if the city directs us to do it, we are open to doing that, because we will work in the trenches. We're not in an ivory tower. We want to make sure that whatever legal needs you have, we're able to serve those. As I said before, we represent the governing body, we advise the elected officials, we assist administrative and executive officers, we will provide counsel on public records, public meetings, executive sessions, if there are community interactions, if it's responding to personnel actions, or HR issues. And Erin is certainly the go-to person when it comes to HR issues. Do you want to add something to that?
Sure, yeah, so as Eric indicated, my name's Erin Fennerty. I've been with Louvast Cobb for a little over 10 years. We're one of the oldest continuing law firms in Eugene, and I've had the privilege of working my entire Oregon career in, at Louvast Cobb. For public bodies, I handle a lot of the employment issues, HR issues that come up, a lot of civil rights, so not uncommon for me to be dealing with a Foley complaint, dealing with an EEOC complaint, dealing with an OSHA complaint, also manage and oversee a lot of internal investigations related to alleged misconduct, or also just, you know, concerns about general practice, whether general practice and procedures being followed in accordance with the city or the public entity's requirements. Also, deal a lot with advising boards in terms of issues that come up during meetings, anticipated issues that might be coming up for future meetings, reviewing policies, making suggestions as to amendments, providing drafting instructions. We are mindful of our clients' budgets and attempt to provide services in an efficient manner, which is one of the reasons why Eric and I do a lot of tag team work in terms of when we get an assignment in, we will check what the other person said, hey, got a call from this entity, got a call from this public body on this topic, have you been working with them at all on this issue? So that way, we don't have duplicative or overlapping services. We try to keep our fees generally low, because when we are one of the oldest firms in the Eugene and Lane County area, we view ourselves as being an integral part of that community, and so we view the rates that we charge as being, we like to keep them on the lower end, so that, we view that as a contribution to our community. So I'm gonna pass this back to Eric, and so if you have any questions for us, we're happy to answer them.
And while the response to the RFP, I think, is a little more detailed, we certainly run the gamut of assisting with developing rules, bylaws, policies, ordinances, public contracting rules, whether you're under the AG model rules, or whether you want to draft your own and have tailored rules that are going to be good for your procurement, your contracting. And we are available to assist in drafting, we're available to assist in analyzing, or whatever is needed in the way of public contracting work. Risk management, claims management is something that we do on a regular basis. We assist in investigations as needed. And again, each one of these areas that we work in, it's a matter of what service do you need? And we're not here to foist services upon the city, rather, it's a matter of being responsive to the city in what they need. If it's hearings for a local contract review board, if it's real property, whether it is acquisition or disposition of that property, whether it's environmental protections or covenants, and how to best address our natural resources and water rights, these are all areas in which we've had experience over the past decades, and we're happy to share that with the city. There's capital improvements. Oak Ridge is a great city that is very active. It's got a lot of resources that is in its own infrastructure, and maintaining that infrastructure, building upon your heritage, is something that you have as a special resource of your own. Telecommunications was mentioned earlier, and that is more and more common, especially now with 5G, and everyone wanting to have space on the poles for small cell deployment, and how do you navigate those leases and rights, and along with the state mandates, state and federal mandates as to how you need to make that available.
Do you have a button to hit now?
Okay, very good, thank you. And so a key issue is what is the city council actually seeking from general legal counsel? That's a big question. How can the legal services be effectively and economically delivered by general counsel, and then be complementary to any other consultants that you have, any other special counsel you have? And Louvast Cobb, we're used to working with consultants and special counsel, so that you can have a combined effort on your behalf. So as to services, who do you want us to work through? What personnel are involved? What delegation is the city providing to work with city council, and is that through the city administrator or other staff? And so, you know, like, we serve as general counsel for the Eugene Water and Electric Board, and we have two contracts with the Eugene Water and Electric Board. One where we're providing services of legal counsel to staff, and then a second contract, which is providing legal counsel... And so, as Aaron mentioned, Louvas Cobb is invested in the community, and, you know, here we are at the gateway of the Willamette National Forest and all your resources. This is in our neighborhood, and we hope that you give us great consideration on this matter.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have questions?
I do. I have one.
Yes.
In your billing, when you send your billing out, who redacts that? If the billing comes out to the staff or council for the billing, who redacts that paperwork? Do you guys redact it before it gets to us?
By redact?
So we generally don't redact paper, our bills, because our bills is the opportunity for you to review our services that we provide, the time that we spend on those services and have an understanding. Generally, with our public bodies, we have a point person who's been appointed to receive those bills in order to review them, and then if there's questions about charges that have been incurred or services that have been incurred, then the point person can reach out to, you know, various individuals and entities within the public body to ascertain whether or not those services were appropriately requested, and then that point person then authorizes payment. So it doesn't go out to.
But that's internal to the city.
Yes.
We provide you with detailed billings of description of what was done. If you wish to have the point person of who it was that we were working with, we would have that listed there as well as the hours and the charges.
So if it was a point person that was the problem, would that person of staff be redacting it, or would you guys redact it?
So if you're talking, let it and please correct me if I'm wrong. So for example, if the city is receiving counsel as to an internal issue with an employee, your concern is, is that billing going to go to the employee? And perhaps it's someone who's higher up in the department, is that billing going to go to that person who's with whom the conflict is? No. The idea is the billing gets sent to a central person, generally finance or footkeeping, and they authorize a payment. There have been a number of situations where we have advised public bodies where there has been a conflict, for example, between the administrative officer and the board, for example. In cases like that, an arrangement is generally worked out with the board or the governing entity, because that's our our primary point person, our primary client, and generally the bill gets submitted to, for example, the executive assistant or someone who works for the board or the governing entity. But that's generally an issue that gets worked out on an individual one-on-one basis depending upon the situation.
And we usually try to do that at the inception so that we can open up a different point number in our billing system so that all of those billings, whatever needs to be segregated, is set off in a separate billing file so that that can be directed differently.
Counsel? Bobby?
So exactly what experience do you have with municipalities like ours? Because I'm hearing about electric companies and stuff. What does how does that correlate?
We represent the Eugene Water and Electric Board, which is the City of Eugene, Department of the City of Eugene, is municipal utility. So it's all under the same municipal code, municipal laws that we need to follow. And I've been working with that for the past 23 years and Aaron for the past nine with me on it. And then we also do public body work in the school districts. Many years ago, I had worked for Harang Long, and it was the City of Eugene City Attorney's Office. I also worked for the Lane County Office of Legal Counsel from the county council perspective. And from the clerk perspective, yes, from 1992 to 1994, I was the law clerk for the Honorable Morse K. Merton in the Lane County Circuit Court.
And one of our associates is also a former clerk, and another one of our partners is a former.
Yes.
I think most of our partners are former clerks.
At least two others.
Okay.
Two other partners.
Yes. Counsel, any other questions?
Thank you very much for your time.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. 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 Okay.